Dětské přátelé, pánové, pánové, všichni lidé. Lord Mayor, Krasný.
Všichni si sedíte. Je to velmi drahé, vidět, že jste tady týčeň. A také, příteři, pánové, přátelé a přátelé. A jsme měli mnoho, mnoho poděkování. Somu budeme ukázat později v obchodovém prostoru. Ale já bych rád chtěl přivítat významného ambassadáře Johna Linka, ambassadářa Doroše Kupák, členového parlamentu Alexa Lees-Dot. Ale někdy o tom budeme mluvit později. A také máme ve vlastním prostoru velkou kontingentnost z Evropy. A také z Pampa. Takže příteři, příteli z daleka. A velmi, velmi příteři tady v Oxfordu. Velmi, velmi. Dnešní pořadí je trochu... Já bych rád začal s souvislým plážem parlamentu, kde budeme vzít volby na konferenci pro všechny městské různosti. A to bude většinou s pánovými pánovémi tady, myslím, že je to skupina tady. Ten s poliky. A pak budeme mít propozující a druhým propozující mluvu. A pak budeme otevřít, pak budeme vzít volby. A pak se pojednáme s některými přáteli, které jsme přijali. A pak nakonec budeme konferovat oblohu. A Benny však bude potom odpovídat. Takže s tímto, děkuji velmi. Budu propozovat mluvu. Takže tohle je skutečně s velkým drahémi plachem a hrdostí, že jsem mohl propozovat Benny Wender na svobodu města v Oxfordu. Je to honorální titul. A je to konferováno na těch, kteří mají nějakou spojenost s městem. A odlišují se i ve službě lidí města nebo na interní části. A já bych originálně propozoval Benny Wender nejen proto, že potřebuje tyto kritéri, ale i proto, že mnoho dalších přátel, kteří vidí to, že Benny je opravdu dobrý. Ale proto, že i většinu toho, co my vnímáme jako dobré, myslím, že my jako pánové, myslím, že ve středním středí město. A to je bez ohledu na politickou souvislost. Mnoho lidí, kterým jsme velmi milovali, mezi námi je obsahovaný v mnoha zprávách. A samozřejmě jsem ani nevěděl, co bych propozoval Benny na svobodu města. Bude mě tady sedět, bude mě tady sedět, bude mě tady sedět. A vlastně bude mě představit ceremonii také. Tyto věci mají nějaký zvláštní způsob, jak to se děje. A ani já nevyjádřil, samozřejmě, na této chvíli, co by mě v Oxfordu zaměřilo. A já velmi se záměrnil na vytvoření Oxfordu jako města, a začínání rozšíření kultuálního zdraví v Oxfordu. A vlastně jeden z mých charakteristů dneška je asylník. Kdo velmi pracuje v této oblasti. A samozřejmě Benny přišel do Ukrajině, hledající politiku asylníka. A my společně mluvíme hluboce o Oxfordu jako město sanktií. Ale Benny a později Maria a mladší Benny, Oxford byl opravdu v této místnosti. A v této místnosti, kde mohli vyjít z horby a z persegurace. Takže my máme v Bennym konferenci oblohy, velmi obsahujeme tu myšlenku o městě sanktií. A ti, kteří zná Benny, ví, že on nejprve mluví o jeho zmatenosti v záležitosti. A já jsem musel vzít zpátky některé údaje, které byly použity pro podporu této příležitosti. Do Ukrajině, aby jsem vlastně zjistil nějaké z toho, co bylo docela krizové. Krizové údaje a podmínky, které jeho představili. The threats to life and limb, které trpěl. A škála Benny je však jeho dnes. Ale samozřejmě, jak všichni víme, bez pomocí těchto nádraží Benny se dostal. A po dostavení asylníka do Ukrajině, v Oxfordu byl svatý. A to bylo více než 15 let dříve. A teď je British system s hlubokou láskou na Oxfordu. On řekl mi, že byl příliš dlouhý, že svůj život byl velmi způsoben vracením k liberovanému, vzdálenému manu. Zůstal s lámi v očích a jeho nejhlubších žádostí byl vracení. Takže Benny vytvořil interní svobodnou vzdálenou kampanu v Oxfordu, kde ještě byl v období, až byl vzdálený, až byl vzdálený. A tady v obdouche, tady jsou mnoho lidí, s kterými pracoval v této roli. A kampana má velmi jednoduchý účel. A to je, aby mohla být mírně zasezena internášně súčasná, nezávislá lidí v westpapla. Něco, co bylo odmítnuto v EU, když region byl přinášen z Důštu do Indonésie v 1969. A to je předtím anniversárním dnešním týkem. A jeho cíl je velmi popularní. Posledním týdne představil 1,8 milionu signárov. To je signárok, potvrzení pro volbu na Unicejního národního komisáře pro human rights, Jimmy Brown. A to znamená, že to je 71% indígenické populace v westpapla. A v minulém roce, kdy byl to potvrzeno v Oxfordu, jsem mohl ho vidět s velmi speciální pozorností. A jsem byl v tomto pozornosti velmi dotknutý mnoha z signárov, s čím se blíží lidé. A jsme se mohli zkusit, ale zboží, že se jména vyjde a lidé stráví z jejich identitě. A westpapla je skutečně připraveno politici a zprávce. Máme některé MP, kteří dnes hovoří a tady v přítešních příležitostech, je velmi příjemný. Andrew Smith, samozřejmě, našeho výrovněho MP, byl národní supportem. A jen dva měsíce temiž, měli jsme první parlamentní rozhovor na westpaplu. A s příčinami Alexa a dalších. A já velmi doporučuji, že si čtete celý debat v Adisal, protože je docela pohodlný. A jsem byl způsoben, že je to představeno Robe Corr, konzervativní, a měli jsme mnoho podporu. Alex Labor, DUP, SNP. A je to velmi jasné, že problémy dotknu lidi na postranní politické spektře. A já si pouze čtu velmi krátký extrakt. Bens story přivede do očí nejslachodnějšího. Bennyho otec byl vlastně jeden z 1025 představitelů v 1969, který volil na akt svobodného volby a to výsledky budoucnosti westpapla. Benny říká, že ještě si pamatuje o tom, co mu řekl otec, jak byl zmaten a řekl, že se sám a celá jeho rodina zabije, pokud volí za nezávislost. Samozřejmě, že za více než deset let tento pán se zaujala legitimitou westpapla.
As the highest honour of the city and one of the oldest traditional ceremonies still in existence, the Honorary Award for Benny Wenda, as freedom of the city, is to say the least, right and fitting in the life of his eminent contribution to the city, but also in the crumple arena, come on with his humble beginnings and difficult challenges encountered, which are the very foundations of his great agenda. Then, we have learned from the many excellent attributes you have displayed over the years by fighting the violence for the West Papua self-determination and on issues of human rights, that it takes courage to embrace the possibilities of your potential. Having flown past the summit of refuse, nothing is impossible. This one, the service of mission, could not come at all in time, since the West Papua cause has rapidly getting momentum across the international stage in solidarity with states, civil societies and churches, all because of your intolerable will, leadership and strength towards this number of causes. With such achievements and personal qualities, we can only endorse the acclaimed decision of the Oxford City Council to award Benny Wenda the world deserved recognition of the freedom of the city Honorary Award for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. I'd now like to ask one of our MPs and these folks to stage. Say a few words.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It's a pleasure to follow on from His Excellency and an absolutely enormous privilege and pleasure to be here as we confer the freedom of our city to Benny Wenda. And I must say that Benny really is one of our most remarkable citizens in so many ways. The experience that Benny went through before he came to our city would have broken many people. And yet he came here with his family, continued that optimism, redoubled it, and now we see his message being taken up not just in the Westminster Parliament, but also amongst parliamentarians right across the world. And I'm so delighted to see many people from other countries here now also signed up to support West Papua independence. I'm very, very pleased that they are here now. I was absolutely delighted to be present when we were able to take that petition with 1.8 million signatures into Westminster. It's a huge petition. It has to be carried by Benny and enormous by on rollers to actually show the UK government quite how many people are concerned about this issue and how many people in West Papua are prepared to risk their safety in order to express their view about the need for independence. And I'm very, very pleased that we have here Alex Sobel MP, who's the Chair of the APPG for West Papua, who helped to engineer some of those meetings. Benny, your story, I think, has inspired huge numbers of people in our city and beyond it. And as was already mentioned, one of them was my predecessor, Andrew Smith. And sorry that he can't be here today, but he asked me to say a couple of sentences on his behalf of warmest congratulations and good wishes to Benny and his family and everyone who has campaigned, and I think that's just about everyone here in the audience. All solidarity and support Benny. So the world hopes rights, injustice and self-determination for the people of West Papua is achieved. And I just want to end by saying that we in Oxford are very privileged. Because of Benny, we have a window to West Papua. And not many people are able to see what is happening there because of the ban on media coverage and because of the ban on journalists. We can look through that window, but we also have a responsibility, because we can look through it, to act on what we see, inspired by the example of Benny, who, as I said, I am absolutely delighted now has the freedom of our city. Thank you.
Coming, and as has been said by any who have received so many messages of support, perhaps in the inbox and certainly mine, by the way, the others, are being bombarded with messages of support that come either via the campaign office, Benny's office, or directly to us or through the Lawmate office. But we found that it's worth trying to introduce a couple of those into this part of the proceedings. Although, as I said, some of them will also be conveyed later on. So, Councilor Holstia Jafari, I'll be very kindly agreed to read out some of those particularly special ones. So, I'd like to welcome her to the stage.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be reading the message of support from Joan Hovin, Leader of the Labour Party, and Caroline Lucas, MP for Brighton, Brighton, William, former Green Party Leader. Joan Hovin, I regret that I'm not able to be here today to congratulate Benny in person on receiving this prestigious and well-deserved award. Benny, many congratulations to you. I've had the privilege of knowing Benny for a long time and have always deeply admired the great passion and spirit with which he has spoken up for the people of West Papua. He has been an entireless campaigner for the West Papua people's rights to self-determination, earning international recognition for his advocacy and skilled diplomacy. Benny's commitment to this struggle has been unafforded and I am pleased that his enormous contribution has today been recognised with this honour of the freedom of the city of Oxford. It is particularly fitting to be given by the city where he has lived as a political refugee for many years. My late brother died in Cape New Guinea after having lived there for some years. I developed a special affection for the island on my visit, for its history and, of course, its natural beauty. Being rich in natural resources, the island of Papua has inevitably attracted the interests of the mining industry and sadly decades of mineral extraction exploitation have caused untold damage to the island's people. Benny deserves recognition for his tremendous support for West Papua's environmental sustainability and the rights of its people who depend upon it. Congratulations to Benny and Oxford.
And Caroline Lucas, I am absolutely delighted that Benny Wenda has been granted freedom of the city of Oxford. I've had the privilege of knowing Benny and his family for over 20 years and used to represent him when I was a member of the European Parliament. He is a passionate, courageous and charismatic campaigner for freedom and justice for West Papua. He unstinkably speaks truth to power despite considerable risk to himself and his family and has done a vast amount to raise awareness of the treatment of his people by the Indonesian authorities and army. Oxford has always given a warm welcome to Benny and I am sure the city will be proud he chose to make it his home and that this honour has been bestowed upon him. And from me, a first generation member, daughter of someone who also escaped persecution to you, massive congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we were meant to have at this point George Marmio speaking. I had a message and it was slightly delayed. So I think what we'll do is we'll go ahead to make the award to Benny and then we'll have a here for Benny. And then if George does turn up, which we're sure he will, then we'll either hear him later or in the reception. So I probably have to leave with that. So, now formally, I'd like to invite to the stage Benny to accept your frame of citizenship. Thank you.
Your Excellency, Honourable Members of Parliament, Lord Mayor, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, this is a true honour to be with you all here today. May I begin by greeting you all on behalf of my people in traditional language, wah, 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 wah. When I was a small boy, just about five years old, Indonesian military bombed my village, killing family members in front of my eyes. I grew up in the jungle for almost five years. I saw many of my young friends die from malaria and starvation. It was in good, good, goodwill that I survived. When I went to high school, an Indonesian satellite gun sparked in my face on the first day. I did not understand. I thought maybe I smelled bad. I did not understand. I thought maybe I smelled bad. And that evening, I washed myself three times over the shop. The next day, the gun sparked in my face again. Indonesia sees West Papua as different, as inferior. We are black and they are not. Indonesia treat us like second-class citizens in our own land. Growing up, I saw much violence, discrimination, brutal inflicting by Indonesians on us, the Nazi West Papua. I was born with this issue. I roll all with it. This struggle is therefore in my blood. West Papua is one of the richest places on this planet. Exotic spaces and minerals. The Indonesian state has always wanted our resources and is willing to eliminate people of West Papua where it's claimed to get our wealth. At the university, I stood up with others for our right to self-determination, independence. For this activity, I was in prison and tortured as I lay in chains in solitary confinement for over a month and facing 25 years in prison, Indonesian prison, on full charges. I knew I had mission. I had to tell the world what is happening to the people of West Papua. The leaf in my leg from the bomb dropped on my village when I was five. The scar on my ankle from the prison chain are what I carry with me everywhere I go. They are the physical reminders of the suffering of all my people. Those are reminders that colonial exploitation continues in this 21st century in West Papua. Although I am honoured to receive this freedom of the city award, I'm not truly a free man. I will not be free until I can return to my own land, a free and independent West Papua. I did not come to Oxford to seeking a better life, but with a mission until we can stop the genocide of people, until we can stop the destruction of our resources, our mountains, our rivers, until killing and torture ends, until our morning staff flag, that is morning staff flag, can be raised without being sought in prison. I will not be free. Today is another step along a long road to home. This is my personal story, but nearly every West Papua has their own similar story to tell. This is a story city has always recognized struggle of oppressed people. So Nelson Mandela received the Freedom of the City Award. This award is for people of West Papua to recognize the voice, the cry for justice and freedom for the last 58 years. On behalf of people of West Papua, I say thank you to this award. It's very significant to West Papua who for several days have been risking their life, marching and praying, thankful for your solidarity. My profound gratitude to the Lord Mayor, the City Council and the former Lord Mayor for concerning, conferring this award and the VC Podskin team for organising this event. Time will not permit me to take every individual person who has given assistance to me and my family in this struggle, but I do want to name a few people. Firstly, my wife, Annie. Who has raised our children safely when I have been away. I couldn't have done without you. The local Oxford community. A special thank you to George Marmio, James Ward, Marshall James, Anton Rivera, Reverend Dr Frye, my vicar and supportive church and the doctor at the National Hospital who helped to repair my bone damaged leg. The Free West Papua Campaign was set up here in this city with the vital assistance of so many people in Oxford who are here today. Thank you to everyone so much. Also want to thank the British Parliamentarians Group for West Papua Day by Alex Sobel, Richard Harris, Anna Lee Dodd, John Babel, Caroline Lucas and Lord Deppson, including the international lawyer for West Papua. My deep gratitude also goes to Bertha Foundation London for their continued valuable support. Thank you to the Foundation of Law Justice Society, Worcester College and the research in the Department of Politics, the University of Warwick, for what they have accomplished. I must also thank you to Prime Minister, to the government and people of Almaty who for decades have led the way with their unending sacrifice and support. Ambassador Don Lee and Noah Kuba who are here. I thank the Government of Solomon Islands, Papua New Guinea and all the Pacific nations. I thank all the activists and churches across Malaysia, the Pacific who are tireless to support us and the international solidarity groups across the globe from Australia to South Africa. Special thank to the United Liberation Movement for West Papua and our diplomat across the globe. Finally, people of Beigou, my people of Beigou, eldest of the bush in the refugee camp in exile, where we were. This freedom of the city of Oxford is your award. It is for your hard work and for your tireless campaign. Continue your struggle to break yourself from tyranny. We have made progress on many fronts on the international stage at the UN Human Rights Commission and the UN Bicoronation Committee, where we present our petition signed by 1.8 million indigenous West Papua. In conclusion, each one of you may history. No matter how little you can help the struggle to free the people of West Papua. In fact, that you are already part of the history today being here. Your prayer, contributions and solidarity will be forever cherished in here heart of the people of West Papua, which humanity and sincere gratitude and say thank you, Oxford. We hope in God's mercy, Papua Malika, free West Papua.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Slide out the quarter and I'll go to George. Thank you very much, George. George did tell us to be a little bit late, but your fork's down to the reception now.
Well, I'd have to be quick. Sorry Benny to come today. It's a total delight to be here. The occupation of West Papua is a blot on the surface of the planet and the complicity of powerful nations in that ongoing occupation should be a source of shame to everyone who lives in it. This has been happening now since, well, since the year of my birth, when the Indonesians first occupied West Papua and then engineered this farcical act of free choice, which was the very opposite of what it sent across. And then extraordinarily, the rich nations of the world decided to, not exactly endorse it but not reject it either, to nod it through and accept the occupation of West Papua as a kind of fact on the ground. And of course it suited them to do so because at the time, we were in the throes of the so-called Cold War and so hard as Indonesia was seen as a Western asset. Our son of a bitch, as they used to call him, as he used to say, you know, recognized. He was a very unpleasant man, but paid on our side, so what did it matter? And then of course it became a place that corporations from powerful nations could loot. And it is looting when you don't have the consent of the people of the nation to operate there. It is straightforward theft of resources. And that theft of resources is continuing, in some cases engineered by extremely large companies based in this country. We conspire, though we may not all know it, in the theft of the patrimony of peoples who have not consented to the presence of those corporations in their nation. So it gives me tremendous pleasure that Benny has been granted freedom here of the kind he cannot enjoy in his own nation. A nation whose very existence has in effect been robbed off the map. If you look at a world atlas, you'll see West Papua as labelled part of Indonesia, as if it is not a nation in its own right. There's this sort of conspiracy of silence that effectively gives its blessing to this illegal, brutal, genocidal occupation. So in conferring the freedom of the city to Benny, we recognise the deferred and delayed freedom of him and his people. And I know that everyone of us in this room wishes him and the West Papua people our love, our solidarity and our wishes for the freedom which is there by right but has so far been denied. Thank you.
My last job, thank you very much, George. My last job today is to officially close the ceremony. I'd like to do so by setting thank you words for the attended. Also like to thank the terrible staff, the busy and the hard people who managed to take the ball, who've managed, put a lot of effort in to arrange this event this evening and to make sure you're all seated and you like the invitations. And people are being, you know, they're meant to do whatever you're meant to do. So thank you very much to the terrible staff. So I'd like to formally close the ceremony and invite guests to join me and fellow councillors with Benny and his family in the Oxford Library, next door there for reception. And as I said, we will have an open mic there if anyone would like to say something. Well, we've got a presentation there supplied by the Free West Papua Campaign tries to draw together some of the many, many other messages of support we have. So with that, I'd like to thank everyone and formally enclose the ceremony. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make way for the library. Thank you.